Thank you Danielle, I am going to open the meeting at seven oh five. This meeting is being recorded, we have people online via Zoom and we have people here inside the meeting room. So let's start with our first piece of agenda, I think we'll do this about per meeting minutes. Jeff, do you have a motion for that?
No.
I don't usually, I'm sorry, I should have done.
It's okay, but it's just the date, right? What is the date on those?
Yeah, I was just cruising through it.
Three eleven.
Three eleven.
Yeah, March eleventh. Do you want to just give me that?
Yeah, yours.
Thank you.
I'm still.
Yeah, I just.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, I mean, just me pressing out, I just give it through.
If you're not ready, that's, that's okay, well, it will, we'll just do that later on. Or bring it back up. Or if no one is, if not everyone is ready, I'm going to just do it on the next meeting.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Okay.
Good, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Does anyone have the agenda in front of them? May I apologize? I've been in public here.
What do you want to know?
I know we have the seven thirty four scheduled.
It's seven thirty.
That's the one.
We got a bunch of ZBAs.
One two, okay. Yeah, when we, when we go through the ZBAs. Yeah, thank you, I was talking with the full inquiry, Main Street.
About three thirteen, right?
Think that was, that person, oh, look at you, yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, okay.
Everybody's. Okay. So you can do something. Yeah, we can do ZBA applications, but the first one I had there was three thirteen.
Yeah.
And that's Main Street and that is for an office trailer, temporary office trailer of a property owned by CW Transportation, the applicant is the North Reading Auto Inc. And it says in quote unquote, until work on inner offices completed. So what's the position on that Danielle? Typically, I would imagine a temporary office is okay, is there a limit on how long?
Um, yeah, I, I know the building department has limits on these, they permit temporary trailers, I don't know what the timeframe.
Yeah.
Yeah, three months. Um, I think it's, I think it is three months.
Yeah. And so, again, the comments just.
Really park this thing.
Uh, they showed a diagram of where it's going to be, they showed the main, no, it's next to their public carry, positive, on the left side of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay, off to the left side of the building. Oh, I gotcha, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so the comments, I guess, would just be with following building code or whatever, or the building inspector. Especially since they referenced while offices are being completed, so it must mean they have an open building permit with.
Maybe we could just say any restrictions for the building.
Yeah, there are restrictions. Thank you, Mark. What's next, I'm gonna ask. Two forty one?
Two forty one, I remember.
That, that was kind of weird, just. Well, yeah, raise fouls, six. So again, fouls can be chickens, ducks, geese, turkey, quail. Typically raised for meat, egg, feathers, he wants quantity six. And I only, we, we just joke and just, I'm pro chicken, but usually it just says chickens, it doesn't say foul, so. So like, makes you kind of peeced, like, oh, what are they up to?
Isn't it ostrich?
It did, you know. Um, again, you know, it's always, where they showed it going looks good, they, they did a nice job of kind of showing how, um, or actually, that was the other one, not this one, this one doesn't have that. It's the other one that comes out later, that can give you a really good map, so this one, just typical neighbors. No roosters, right, Danielle?
Yeah.
Probably have a form letter, uh, statement written on that one. Anything else, guys, on this one?
It does, on the picture, it does say chicken cage.
Yeah. There you go.
It's a detail, but I bet.
Yeah, that was two forty one, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Well, this, yeah, that was two forty, sorry. There's, there's another chicken too. Anything else, everyone, anyone good with that, two forty one?
Just neighbor, I think you all think we need, you know, we do, it's neighbors.
Neighbors and roosters, good.
No, yeah, neighbors and no rooster.
Okay. Next one is two oh four, main. This one's come to us before Danielle, and so I think the comments from us, again, we're not the governing body here, I don't believe, but it, it just seemed like it's a buckshot of uses, so there's the auction and real estate sales function, there's a retail sales of new and used items, which is like, that's like everything on earth. And then music events. So again, I don't know how the ZBA gets their head around all that, but as, as a CPC, I'm, I'm trying to get my head around that, like, it just seems like.
My, my response is it would be not enough information.
Yeah, I think, didn't we say that last time? Cause we looked at this before, right?
Yeah, yeah, cause we, we were all picking it around, we really didn't know exactly what they were looking for.
Yeah. Did you read the?
Clarification, not enough information.
Yeah, did you read the memo too, or is it email? And it's basically saying I wanna extend, it's to Kathy Morgan. And they're asking to. Yeah, exactly, it's, it's asking to extend this, well, you know, it's not going to be the April, was it eleven, meeting that this is for ZBA? Um, did you see, yeah, May, right? They're asking, so it's not even going to be their business for a little bit anyways, is, he's asking to extend it, but it's one of the more unusual ZBA requests I can, but usually everything's specific, like setbacks, chickens, whatever, you know, this one's like, what is it? So, even as a resident, I'm trying to figure out what kind of business. Okay, um, so that is two oh four, then one fifty one is the chickens on, one fifty one chestnut, these chickens. We're all in agreements and comments, neighbors, more roosters. They did show layout where the, where the coop's going and it seems like it's a little offset from the activity. And the second last is one thirty four Park. That is right at the Hornets Nest, I think above it, and that is to add two apartments. So Danielle, do they just need a, like, a variance to do, like, I thought they were allowed to do it.
Um, so that zoning district doesn't allow residential, um, and I our zoning doesn't allow residential, so unless there was a previously non-conforming use, then they'll go into another non-conforming use, which maybe are some would allow. Um, I don't know what really they asked. I mean, it's not really clear, uh, coming out.
It seems like, from what I could read on it, it's basically, you know, space that's wide open that they want to convert, so. But there hasn't been, you know, it is local, it's a local business district, it's really discouraged to an extent for residential.
So is that, um, is that mixed use to, um, like, I, I know what you're talking about, that building, is that like considered a mixed use, or is that strictly just converted?
It's a local business. It's all perfect.
But it's not so on the mixed use?
Mixed use was completely in that area. So, like, I, I think as Danielle said, the, the problem with that area is that basically there's been residential there before, the local business. And so if it pre-exists, you can't take it away.
Right.
But to add more to it, I don't know that we can, I don't know if we can do that legitimately, so. So, um, I would say we'd point out that we allow it.
But I mean, yeah, does the zoning allow it? That's what I'm saying, does the zoning as it stands right now allow that?
I, I don't think that there is really available for that.
Yeah.
Oh.
Um, but that's my interpretation and not the building inspectors or the ZBA. I would, looking at this myself, I would say that, no, there's no provision in our zoning to allow for this that they use through, through either a variance or a special permit, unless there is something not conforming that they're considering, but that the application doesn't explain that, so it's hard for me to say.
Right, sure. Is that something maybe we should, um, maybe talk to the building inspector? I mean, maybe he has a little more insider information.
We don't get to make the decision too, just why?
Well, that's what I mean, so like.
If you want to make, make a recommendation or not make a recommendation, that's, that's what I'd be asked to do, but I would, uh, I would, I would probably from what I understand, I would probably stay away from the, uh, what the building inspector do with it.
Yeah.
But as far as I know, I guess everybody else can have their say, but as far as I know, it's not, it's not allowed, so. And then so, so I would just point that out to the ZBA, let them know. I'm not sure how, I mean, the ZBA can vary anything, you know, use all kinds of stuff, but I think there was a limit to what they can do, and I don't know if they can vary the suit.
We don't allow any variants, that's in our zoning.
Yeah, so.
So, I mean, it says it right in, in the draft that Jerry said, explain, this is not an allowed use, and you could appeal it. Uh, his decision to the ZBA, so.
Which, but they're just gonna say it's not allowed use.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's all, I mean, I just, yeah, just trying to get that.
You're allowed to appeal almost any decision, I think, by the building inspector, but it doesn't mean.
I don't think they can, um, I think they get a variance for this.
You just want to say you support the decision of the building inspector? Or, cause I think that's what this actually is, it's, it's a challenge to the, it's an appeal of the decision of the building inspector, it's not a variance application.
Right, I mean, I, I think that's, I'm probably okay with that, yes, supporting Jerry's decision or his finding, rather than, you know.
The last one was two Red Hill, which is a homemade reuse in home.
Which one, two Red Hill?
Yeah, the last one. So I, again, I don't have a problem with it, you know, but again, it's not my call, so I don't know, it's just, I'm only gonna apply to.
Well, it's home occupation. So we should indicate that they need to follow the rules of home occupation, you know, as far as real estate, et cetera, et cetera.
And more help because it's producing food, so.
And well, every ten months, like this come forward, that make food things of different kinds.
Yeah, bacon.
Yeah. But like, I'd probably, but again, you should have to, you have to specify no retail sales. You know, and then.
So. On the, um.
The question you would ask is how, how is this, how would these bakery items be distributed? But the question they should ask, and you might want to prompt them to ask that.
So the board of health determination said that they, uh, they checked not approved property, not as, not in compliance with the health. And with the health code, and it says the remarks incomplete.
Very good, very good. Portals to get over. So, you know, while they're selling, Danielle, big question, one, which is everyone means of selling, um.
Because they.
Another big one, question mark, on the board health departments.
Because the, um, the, um, home occupation does limit no matter what area they can use, but it also says no customers can come to the house. That's our, to the, to the house, you know, where your customers do the house.
Right.
That's, uh.
This, this is saying the property is not in compliance with the health code. And the box is checked, cannot approve.
The, the, the app can check that part.
Right, but, I mean, okay, well.
Yeah. Also, Jeff, I'm not sure from the past, I'd have to, I look back, but I'm not sure from the past, is when we have allowances to happen as a hobby, if you will, that we require the board of health.
So what do we?
Like a big sale for the school. You don't have board of health come to your kids and do a big sale for the school.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but they're, they're asking to, to, it's an act, they're a bakery.
Definitely.
I mean, um.
That's why I said you could ask about distribution and all those things, it's not lies.
Yeah.
Right, do you want me to, uh, say that the CPC recommends, um, asking how, how items would be sold, whether board of health requirements will be met? And whether they are able to adhere to the home occupation restrictions, um, that, for example, limit there, you know, being no, no customers on, which is what I'm saying, so it's.
Okay, that's our ZBA, I don't know. Um, getting close to seven twenty, um. I think we, sorry, I did, I think if we start the, um, town meeting, warrant articles thing, it might run well over, or sorry, Thursday, or, or, um, propane ones, I don't want to keep that up, and really. And so Danielle, if you wanted to maybe go over any new business, so you can tell me anything about.
So the, uh, DPDW director and I have been working on, um, an RFP for the Nine Mile Street property that the town is, uh, going to be selling. Um, that should be nearing completion soon, and then town council review, and we'll be in front of the select board at some point soon, and hopefully we'll have that released within the next, um, couple of months. Um. Just want to let you know, uh, town council's prepared the purchase and sale and development agreement for the seven St. Teresa Street property, um, and that's now, uh, with Habit's App for Humanity for their approval, once, um, they're satisfied with that draft, um, it'll be in front of the select board again for the final, you know, disposition, um, and the closing. Hopefully.
That's good that that's normal, huh?
Slowly, but it's.
It is very slowly, yeah.
And I think they do also have other projects, so, like, you know, um, they may take their time reviewing the development.
Cause half, half the community, so they're, they usually take some allow to put, put a, uh, put something together, so.
Then they have to fundraise for the property.
Yeah, and, and like I said, they've always got other properties still on sale.
Right. Um, just want to let you know, I will be out from April seventeenth through the twenty fifth. I'm not going out of the country, so it will not be reachable to bring that.
Oh, tell us, where are you going?
Spain with my family, some friends.
What dates again, Danielle?
Um, so I'll be gone from the seventeenth through the twenty fifth.
Good, thank you, that's great.
Um, and then we were all, all the departments were asked to make two point five percent, uh, cuts to our, our submitted budget request, I was actually able to cut a bit more than that because we had a number of items that haven't been used in, in a few years, so. Um, the biggest impact is, um, that the economic development committee, um, funding is not expected to be included in the budget for this year. If there's more money in the future, of course, we can always look to bring that back, but it hadn't been a fund that they normally spent every year anyway. So it didn't seem like a huge sacrifice to cut that. Um.
Does the economic development committee know that that's the difference?
They haven't met recently, um, I'll let them know, um, I, it's not definite, though, it's, I can let them know that it's been.
Yeah, I don't think they have the major project going right now.
No, I mean, there are a couple of things I have in mind that would be nice to get going, but I don't expect those projects to cost a million dollars, so I think, um, we'll be okay, at least for this year, um, with that. Then, um, I'm working with the town engineer on a possible grant for the Central Street sidewalk project, there's a Safe Roots to School construction grant that, um, might be a really good fit for this, I talked to the Safe Roots to School program and it's possible that, um, could, could be, it could be a good match, um, can't apply this year, uh, we would have to apply next year only because the town has to have a school that partners with the Safe Roots to School program for a period of six months before we're eligible to apply. So that process has to happen first, um, I need to reach out to the Bachelor School, cause I, they, the Safe Roots to School, uh, program told me that the Bachelor, um, is actually interested in in, in partnering, said totally separately, I, I didn't mention anything about the grant, but they're already interested in that, so. I'm, you know, try to work through that with them, um, one thing that I did ask about, um, was whether it'd be helpful to have a community meeting, um, to just make sure that the neighbors are still in support of the project. So I think it would be nice if we planned something, I don't want to crowd up the schedule too much, especially knowing that, you know, town meeting is coming, but I talked to the town engineer about his availability, because I think what would be nice would be to have the residents invited and have town engineer there and able to say here are the plans, here's everyone's driveway, everyone is impacted, people have questions, um, if people are concerned, we can help that, and then that way, when we're thinking about doing the grant application next year, we'll be able to say, you know, the community is supportive, and if we should find out that the community is not supportive, then that is helpful information too. So I was thinking of possibly scheduling this either in May, or probably not June, just because of town meeting and the town engineer's schedule is not great for June, um, but either May, or July, or September, um, I don't know if you all have thoughts about when you might like to try to get something going, but.
Sure, better.
Okay, maybe then the May twentieth, I could try to target, um.
That's a good, that's a good, great product, it could be great to get started out there.
Yeah. Well, I do, as, as I've noted before, we already have a, we, uh, we have a plan to, to split roads from from, uh, Park Street out.
Yeah.
We just need to be able to fund it, so I think that's the.
The down scheme.
That's all we need.
Right.
So we have this design that is mostly done, it probably would take a little bit of money to fully, like, complete it, do bid documents and everything, um, finish it up, and I was wondering, we do have a small amount in the original appropriation that we got from capital, um, and it's only like three thousand six hundred dollars that's left in that. We do have a number, we do have, um, an amount that's still left in the community development fund, so when the time comes, I'm going to be figuring out with the town engineer what we expect the whole thing to cost, um, not looking to get construction funds from the community development fund, but there's still some design work or some other, um, type of work that we might be, that's something that we might consider, you know, like discuss it, I just want to bring that up, if that would be. We do have about ninety five thousand dollars. Yeah. The transition from share file to OneDrive, um, I hope it's working for everybody so far, I provided both links, share file and OneDrive.
Yeah.
Um, share file will be going away soon, because we're not sure of when they'll actually pull the plug, we're not, we're not paying the next bill, because the town's contract is over, but I don't know when it'll seem to be available. So if anyone is having any trouble accessing the link, uh, that I provided for OneDrive, just let me know, I just want to make sure everyone has. Okay.
Is everybody good with that, everyone get it? Sure, is this, Danielle, how, how soon is the share file gonna be eliminated?
So we're not sure, they told me it could be as soon as today.
Oh.
Yeah.
Ah, just went away.
So, goodbye, so I did give you the, the OneDrive link, also it has all the same information in it, but, um, depending on when share file pulls the plug, and when our next billing cycle is over, that, I assume is not totally sure what date that would actually happen, so it's available, I think, for right this moment, but it may not, so.
I'm sorry, I never got my iPad up to be updated, so I'll probably going to give this to you, so I, when they can work out anything, update it.
We can do that, now they don't have to install anything for OneDrive on your iPads, it can just be accessed through the links, um, yeah, like, when you go to the public links too, where I always post the meeting materials, it'll always be there, and you don't have to have any programs or apps installed, which hopefully will make it easier, when we're trying to navigate it, it would be quite so cumbersome, and people having trouble logging in, you don't really have to log in, you can just log and stop, so hopefully it will be easier. And at some point, I haven't been told exactly when this is happening, but at some point, Zoom is not going to be what we use for meetings anymore, it'll be Teams, um, but I don't know yet when that's happening, and I'm very used to posting Zoom information, so, um, I mean, it definitely takes some time for that, because we advertise here, it's healthy.
Yep, send Microsoft Teams, yep, oh, okay, yeah.
It shouldn't be hard, it's just.
It's pretty easy.
Yeah, yeah. We've, we've used it, it's just, I haven't scheduled meetings yet, so I'm just, you know, we're all used to using the, uh, remote, oh, and also, remote access has been extended for another two years, as you may have heard, so we're fine to be doing hybrid meetings.
Does that actually, like, what, does that, does that add to, like, budgets, the, like, all the Zoom stuff? Does that add to, like, the town's budgets? Okay.
Costs something, Teams costs something, I think Zoom is more expensive than Team, I don't know what they go and cost, but it's one of the reasons for the transitions to, you know, from share file on Zoom to Teams and OneDrive, is I think we get more as part of our, like.
Oh, okay.
So I think it's less expensive, but I don't know.
Good news.
All I have is ours.
Yeah. Thanks, Danielle. I'm running on, so. Do you have to, uh, any, um, announcement of the meeting at all, or? Hold on, we have a public, uh, hearing in the meeting?
Just to continue public hearing, so the, it was, the notice was already read, two meetings ago, so we're okay to just.
All right, seven thirty now, so we will now, um, have a hearing for what is the address here, guys? Propane Blue Rhino Exchange Service, propane service. Is anybody here from?
Oh, I think Edward is on the Zoom.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm here with you virtually, how are you guys doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm all right.
So since we met, um, we kind of made a commitment to for some of the members to get out there and see, um, I did that, I think probably some of you here maybe did that, did you go by Walmart, check it out? And then also there was the, the letter kind of requirement, not the letter requirement, but the other department requirements, uh, like fire and building department and things like that, and I, and I do believe they weighed in, um, the fire department just provided, you know, distances that it needs to be from the building, uh, from the entrance, or an entrance. And then, um, I think the building inspector made comments about bollards protection for the for what, the racks or cage, would you call the thing, Edward? That would, for lack of a better word, that holds all the, uh, the bottles.
So, question to you is, does that change anything that you, in your approach of where you wanted to lay it out? Cause it seemed like you were gonna put the system a little closer to the, the, or the doorway or passageway into the garden center area.
Uh, doesn't change too much for me, I, I saw the, the email that Danielle forwarded to me, I don't remember anything about the bollards, but I, I read it quick, so I can go back and look at that, I do remember twenty feet away from the building, ten feet away from any point of egress, um, as far as that goes, all that really changes for us is it's a few feet to the left. Um, if there is a bollards thing that we need to do, then I can definitely, I mean, that's, we, we just want to sell the propane, if there's bollards, you know, that's fine, as long as the property manager okay's it. It would just be something to bubble up there, but we would be fine with that on our end.
Right, is, uh, does the letter from the building inspector say yes or consider, did they?
It says.
Read it yesterday, there was a rule that says that the propane town road here, we must have proper protection relative to bollards. Is the, with the final pool of bollards or other protective equipment being, be given by the building inspector.
Okay. So it sounds like they do want bollards and, or Jerry wants bollards, and I'd suggest, like, as far as what, if you're submitting something to him that you can, you know, see online or whatever, it'd just be a surface bollard, you know, with the expansion anchors, that kind, versus, you know, you know, doing one that you have to core through the concrete and put a pipe bollard in, things like that.
I don't know.
I mean, one, one is better than the other, but at the same rate, one's much more expensive, I think. I mean, than the other to install. And they essentially do a lot of the same thing.
Have to do all the side downs we've here, and drop the name of the concrete.
So concrete, well, yeah, again, it's a little bit more expensive for us, but what I would suggest is um, you, because that is conditionally with the building inspector, that he just submit the type of bollard that you are suggesting you put in, and that, and that would be entirely up to the building inspector of what he would accept. But I would start with a surface one that has a plate, you know, on the bottom that has the four you know, expansion bolts that get drilled in the concrete, that's a starting point, and then that's going to be your least expensive and they are effective, but and again, price here from there. Is, does anybody, any of the other members have any other questions? Ed, you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Excellent. No questions?
Thank you.
Yep, I, I don't have any either, it's, it's not the first Blue Rhino XZ, you know, it's sixty one years, so I'm not like, not thrown back by that proposal or anything. Um, just in other means where people, uh, access propane drills and whatever. So, um, I think you have a motion, we have a.
Yeah, I got it, yeah, so we're good.
Yeah, well, one thing on this, I'll, I'll just ask the public, anybody here or online that has any questions on this application? Again, for a Blue Rhino Exchange Retail System, that would be at the Walmart, um, inside the, um, the garden center area. Again, for a Blue Rhino exchange retail system, that would be at the Walmart um, inside the um, the garden center area.
Could I just, I just um, jump in, because I, I'm looking at my email and I want to make sure I haven't um, missed anything. So I see the email that I was forwarded by Danielle, uh, which, which is from, from Barry, the deputy chief, saying that it's, you know, we're okay with it in the fenced area into the garden center as long as it's twenty feet and the ten feet. And then the building inspector, um, proper protection relative to bollards. So you're saying that, okay, I see that now. So you're saying that that would be even inside of the fence, we want to go ahead with the bollards? As you guys are suggesting, want to make sure that whatever I bring back to my team is consistent with whatever said here tonight.
You could always clarify that with building inspector. I would call them in the morning maybe, but I think, I think they did understand it was going to be inside that, you know, that kicker wall inside the garden center. The only thing I think that's changed from the comments of, of both departments is that it's now going to move a little further away from the egress opening there as you, as you indicated. So it's, it doesn't change a lot of things that the building inspector was looking at it from. So I would expect you still do need to do that, but you could also just verify with him um, in the morning.
Yeah, I.
Well, well, because it's one of those chicken and egg things, like is Jerry, is Jerry's comments pre-dating the fire? Deputy Galvin's like, is it, who's, who's came in first is what I mean. So did, does Jerry analyzing that, knowing it was going to be moved ten feet over, you know, a little bit further away from the opening?
I don't think Jerry would have seen Deputy Galvin.
So that's why it'd be worth a call, just to make sure, because Jerry might say, oh no, if you're going to be ten feet in and behind all that masonry and stuff, then you're good. You know, that, that could be, so anyway, it's worth checking.
I can check and also the language and the regional approval is um, that it's really up to, it's, it's the. Protective equipment placement approval is to be given by the building inspector. So if he decides that the protective equipment needed is nothing, then that's what he could approve.
Right.
It's really, it kind of leaves it up to him. So if you're okay with keeping that language in, that's fine, or if you want to add something else.
I keep it in, yeah. I think Jerry would be reasonable.
Well, the question is, do we need to, does he need to find out what Jerry wants and get it on a plan before we go?
I don't know.
I would just conditionally improve it upon the building inspectors approval, right? Can we do that?
We can do that. Um, I guess we should talk about whether we want to see a plan that is different. I mean.
I would, I would say maybe, um, sorry, um, I would say we would um, we conditionally approve it upon the building inspectors um, protection requirements. And then once that's done, just get a plan.
And receive a plan.
So the plan will show exactly what they've agreed to and we need to sign off on that if we can, but that would be like the record plan.
Definitely.
So that, that in the, in the future, when we look back or there's complaints, we go there and the thing's fifty feet away. You can say it's supposed to be here and this was the approved plan.
Do you want that fire to be approved?
I don't think I need it. Do you guys need it? I, I think.
I think this, the, the big decision, you know, do we want to do, are we okay with them doing one over there? And I think we're okay with that.
Agreed.
So um, so um, but there was always that question about what follows instead, right from the very beginning.
Yeah, right from the beginning.
So uh, so yeah, so we're trying to let Jerry decide and they will, and you should get in touch with building inspectors as soon as possible. And make sure they have a clear understanding of what, what Jerry's going to require as far as the kind of bollards and where they would be, and then they're going to have to develop a plan. That's why I was saying, if you're going to develop a plan, show it to Jerry and Jerry's going to say, okay, and um, and then um. And then as you said, submit a record plan.
Danielle, do you want to um, take your shot at this maybe and then we'll just move it? I mean, like, let's try adding in the building inspector approval of a plan. Let's, you know, do your, do your magic to it and we'll move it.
Alright, let's say I moved that the CPC votes to approve the requested site plan modification for propane tank storage on the property located in seventy two Main Street. As shown on the submitted plans, um. Uh, subject to the building inspector's uh, final review and approval of a revised plan showing um, all requests, all requested, all. All protective equipment um, as required by the building inspector. In accordance with the terms and conditions of the certificate of conditional approval dated April first, twenty twenty five, as amended.
So normally you'd have a motion to get, if that's a. We watched it in a second. Wait, there you go. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both. Guys, thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. So we did our old and new business, DBA's tanks. Uh, so let's go to the only item left, which is our discussion for town meeting warrant articles. Um, so Danielle, I think there's been a couple of developments since uh, the last meeting. And one of them was the citizens' petitions that were submitted. And I thought like you could just give us a like of your little quick one minute of, of that and that process and how they factor into the warrant articles. And citizens' petitions in general, it'd be helpful for everybody.
Sure. So um, there was, there are four citizens' petitions that have been submitted. One of them is not pertaining to this. It has to do with the.
Understood, yep.
Sort of the area size of the zoning district. Um, the three that were submitted are citizens' petitions um, that replicate the petitions. That would be, that replicates the warrant articles that the CPC had previously submitted uh, for inclusion in the warrant and uh, for the October town meeting. So those um, are identical with the exception of um, the, the third article that was submitted. Um, updates the map date that would be made if there were changes made. Um, but other than that, the substance of the articles are the same. Um, when a citizen's petition is submitted, it goes on the warrant. Um, it was submitted by the deadline, so uh, this letter does have to include that in the warrant. As far as um, it being a repeat petition, my understanding of that issue is that if the CPC doesn't recommend um, in favor of the article. That town meeting doesn't vote, but that said, just with the caveat, that that's something we're checking with town council because there may be some. Other interpretation of that from other case law. I mean, it may not be a lawyer or not, going to be the one to analyze that or say that for sure, but that's been my understanding. That a citizen's petition has to go on the warrant, but that, that doesn't necessarily mean that that town meeting has to vote. Because if it doesn't happen, the recommendation from CPC may not be able to. Um, but more to come on that because I don't really.
Is there, Danielle, is there any also tie in with the, once the town has voted on these same articles, which are essentially two applications? They're just forwarded by different, you know, people. Um, there's a two-year kind of moratorium, is that?
That's the understanding, that if the CPC chose to give a positive recommendation on those articles, then it would be no problem with town meeting to vote. Um, yet even though it's a repeat petition, my understanding of petitions though is that if the planning commission does not vote to recommend those articles. That, that it's supposed to be two years, but again, that's, that's the other thing we're having town council look at because of the town council, there are some different interpretations of that based on.
So I'm just curious, um. So even though these were drafted and they are warrant articles, the warrant article, if the CPC decides not to recommend, or we say passover is an option. Can we do that? Then that will not go out on the floor for a vote, is that correct?
That's my understanding of what happens with repeat petitions, but I just, I, I just want to be clear that um, there has, the question has been raised of what, whether that's the final definite answer on that issue. Because apparently there have been situations where planning boards have not recommended favorably on a repeat petition and there have been some other situations. And so I don't know, I'm not, I'm not well versed and not enough to be able to make any kind of decision on that or fully explain it, but I do know it's something that town council is looking for.
So can we get, Danielle, can we get um, can we get council to clarify that?
Yeah, so that's already something I think that town council has been asked about, um, because we know that this is coming. It has to be on the warrant, but it's, can, can town meeting actually vote? Maybe it'll be printed in the warrant and town meeting can't vote. We just don't know yet. So yes, we are.
And, okay. So um, when is the next time we meet?
Um, our next meeting is April twenty. And that's the public hearing for those petitions. Um, because.
Of course it is.
Has to hold a public hearing on any citizen's petition that's submitted. Um, so you can recommend any way you want, um, but the hearing has to be held. Uh, versus.
Very right, okay, that's good. Um, and then while we're at it, since we're just talking this citizen's petition, um, the other one is, if you want to go to that, to, um, that's, that's. Looking to in a, one of the residential zones, take it from a hundred and twenty thousand square feet requirement for a lot um, to eight, forty thousand to kind of match. The other kind of, you know, maximum residential, what um, what are, code is that, are?
Um, so residents, I can't remember if it's in residence R and it wants to be like residence D. One, one of them is a hundred and twenty thousand. Residents R is hundred and twenty, and they, they are requesting that the zoning be changed so that it is, you know, one acre zone, just like all the other residential districts except for R B, which is twenty.
Yeah, okay. And then that's kind of marginalized room. So if, if we were to, to make a change like that, um, would that increase the? Like, what, what kind of effect would that do like to that area? Like, how much would you, would you see an increase of? Like, I mean, I, I mean, I know a lot of those lots are really large and, and like, and how would that like affect like our frontage bylaws and?
So frontage is the same. So it's, it's one sixty, no matter what, um, you know, no matter which of these zoning districts you're talking about. Um, so if you happen to, the impacts answer your question, the impact would be, you have a large enough lot that can now, that, that has the frontage for. Another lot or two other lots, then potentially, yeah, we could subdivide that and it would be through, you know, an A and R process. Um, and you wouldn't need to go through the subdivision control to get additional lots. So yeah.
So, so do we know what the impact would be? I mean, roughly, I mean, Warren, you know the lay of the land?
Well, you know, these are all, these, these, it occurs to me that all these subdivisions, to have these three acres of lot would design with, with roads. You know, to provide at the very least the, the proper, the amount of frontage, but not enough, I mean, may, may be a three, be a three acre lot. But I don't know that there's much more than a hundred and sixty foot of frontage on the road that was created to uh, to access it. So if you don't have another hundred and sixty feet someplace, what do you, how are you, uh, you know?
Especially.
You can't put another house in there technically, although I, but I would say that with this new ADU bylaw, it will provide enough land behind most of those houses. Your ADU could go in everywhere, especially like McIntyre and all of them be there.
Oh, interesting, okay.
So I'm not, I'm, I'm a little curious about what, what the motivation behind this is. Um, because I'm not sure that enough of these lots have enough frontage, unless you start putting roads in and creating more frontage, you know?
And I agree, Warren, because, because if, if we're going to make a zoning change like that, that could, it could really have a big impact for people who live up there.
Yeah.
So if you got one person looking to change the zoning in this massive swatch of land.
Yep.
And there's, you know, I don't know how many residents are in the, what is it, the R?
Yeah, that's in the R.
Yeah, okay, so I mean, how many residents are in that block?
Well, quite few.
Yeah, I would say. So.
I'll look lots up and uh, up and um, um, um. Swan Bond and all up to there, those, there's a whole bunch of big lots up there.
What if I ask our G I S manager to run an analysis and, and tell us first of all, how many properties are in this zoning district? And then of those properties, um, for those, uh, you know, an analysis of, you know, the frontage. How many would have enough frontage to get another lot, which is.
So.
And, and, and they, and they, they probably, again, they're different, when they built these, when they put this subdivision, they certainly weren't going to create. Oh, we, we put three hundred feet on this, on this lot, just for the heck of it, you know, they, they don't want to have to build this, this lot. So I would say that was basically, they, they only did what they needed to do for each one of these. And you couldn't, um, unless you, um, took fifty feet off the frontage and to create a, you know, a road. And put a road back there to try to access those lots, but I don't know, again, if it could, if it would be financially, you know, rewarded in any way, so.
Right. Well, so my, just my concern is, is that if I was living in one of those districts and one person wanted to change the whole district zoning, I certainly would want to know what was going on.
Yeah, I would.
Right, Warren? So I mean, in fairness, is that something like that, that we normally do? Would we?
No, but we can. So for zoning changes, there's no requirement to notify the people whose properties are being proposed for zoning change, but we certainly could do that. It would be an easy thing to do.
Okay, so if we did the study first, see what was, how many, or how many? Yeah, so Danny, Danny's going to do, get you numbers, right? And then, I, yeah, I like that idea. Yeah, then bring it back and.
I would like.
But we don't have a lot of time. That's all I'm saying. So we kind of have to do this at the same time. I think since it would be going to, well, it'd be the same thing if we don't approve it here or look forward to.
It's a recommendation when you do the public hearing. You'll want to vote a recommendation at some point, preferably before town meeting, but if we continue that hearing, you can close the public hearing and just not take a vote. Um, or you leave it open, is probably what I would say, but you can discuss it at the hearing and, and we may not know, like, we can easily find out how many properties.
The G I S.
But then as far as maybe, you know, sending a, a notice to those property owners and just advising them that this is something that we're talking about and that's been proposed for the town meeting. Um, we may not have a lot of feedback from them yet, but we can try to do it quickly because.
Yeah, so I mean, that's the thing, if that warrant, if that warrant comes to fruition and the people are notified, it will drive them out. If they don't want it or, or they do want it, I don't know, either way, it'll drive them out to town meeting.
Proponent to, to put this forth, I would like to know what their, what their motivation.
Well, maybe they'll come to the public, yeah.
They'll come, yeah, he does know when it's being held. I fall just to let him know.
Um, but yeah, I, I do recommend that we do the G I S, we do the letter thing. Um, so that would be also April fifteenth, Danielle?
Yeah.
Okay, so that public hearings then, at that time, so, so Jeff, like, we'll get that information from Dan, so it gives us a better picture of the, of the impact. And then the applicant will be there. Um, any other questions in, in the group here? Because I was going to open it up to Warren here.
Well, um, no, just a comment. I think most of these people are here as a result of the new.
Yeah, which we're going to get to next. I just wanted to go over these petitions, um, because the first one took the old, you know, the one from October and brought it back. So I just wanted to cover that, so we want to understand that. Um, but if no other questions, that's to you all.
This gentleman was going to ask a question, but it's going to be on the new business. Is that what I just heard?
I agree, business change.
That's, 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 yeah, yeah, that's what we're talking about now.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
But it's the, but is it this one?
It's about the, I sound like it's about the Main Street. Yeah, that's still not the sense about Main Street.
Yeah, and that's the next kind of, we're all covering that now. I'm just going like ticking down the list, taking the easy ones first. Did you want to, Jeff, did you have a comment though on this one? This is again. Right, I just want to, everybody specific, I welcome comments, especially online, but this one, we're just talking about the petitions. So it'd be the, the, the three that would bring back all the same articles that were voted by the town in October twenty four. That's, that's the three, and then the single one, which is trying to, um, not trying to, but asking that we vote on um, moving the R R, changing the R R. One hundred and twenty thousand square feet uh, per lot to a forty thousand um, square feet per lot. I, I have one question and Danielle, curious. So the three warrant articles, I'm just kind of backpedaling a little bit, the three warrant articles that are being, uh, citizen's petition are identical to what was already voted down at town meeting, right? Except for just what Daniel said, just, you know, changing the dates for the map, the town, the map. Okay, but nothing, none of the language in that has changed. Okay, thank you. Yeah. Okay. And then again, I'll be quiet. Anybody want to ask a question to that? That's to you.
I've been going, I was at the school committee and I, going to be in select board, but I wanted to come here. Uh, to let, you know, I wanted to talk about our event. I mean, give you guys an invitation to our event, the Northern Republican Town Committee at Kitty's. Right, for the candidates night, that you're all invited to, whether you are running for office or not. And, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to give you that, that invitation. I know I sent you all one and I, hopefully you all received the email that I sent. Uh, I didn't get some responses, so I appreciate that. So that was one of the things I want to talk about.
Thank you.
Uh, I, I did, I did want to talk about this issue if you go out to the meeting on the seventeenth. And would you allow me to?
So what meeting is on the seventeenth?
On May, on May, I'm sorry, uh, to go, uh, March seventeen, you have a meeting.
Or the one we had?
Yeah, the one we had. And the content of. And the content of that and and the concerns I have relative to what this discussion is.
So why don't we, if you don't mind, why don't we table that, I'm gonna go to that one next.
Okay.
Then we'll, we'll kind of start here and then then the floor is yours, okay?
Thank you.
All right, um, in anyone else's that one, so it just, again, I just wanna end up, any, any other questions on the petitions? And we'll get those, we'll have public hearings at the fifteenth, our next meeting. If we're good with that, we'll move on to the next one, right?
Right, and just to be clear, the Main Street proposal is not, has not been submitted to the warrant.
Right, right. So the next, the next one is, and I wanna cover with you, is in the share file, is the language. Um, in the zoning of just a one hundred low. Um, so I just want you to explain that a little bit, like, so what that, so that in in that, it removes. Um, Mark's Landing, right? Am I right? On that, in that particular language, but only has. Edgewood Apartments, if you will, one hundred Lowell Road in there, right?
So what the the um, the C P C had, you know, asked me a couple of months ago, uh, a couple meetings ago, to look at what the. Three A proposal could look like without being moved into Martin's Landing.
Right.
Um, so first looked at just Edgewood. Um, Edgewood by itself wouldn't meet the requirements of three A, but Edgewood plus. We looked at the other district on the Main Street, those together.
Right, so the language, though, that's in that three different articles, right, Warren? Yeah, well, not articles, sorry, zoning ordinances, right? Those are just calling out and putting in one hundred, right? That's what I noticed, I didn't notice, like, there's not other, you highlighted them and they don't have the other, any other parcels, it's just one hundred. Is that corrected or?
The ending to communities, um, okay, so. There are a few things in here.
Yeah.
Um. These are draft warrant articles that were not submitted, but were talked about by the C P C. Um, one of the first one is Lowell Road. Which is just Edgewood, doesn't have any margin, that one is one article. Um, the Main Street mixed use overlay district, um, which if the C P C wanted to pursue this as a free compliant plan, would be a separate article. Because both would be needed to actually comply, so they would be two separate zoning districts. Um, one of them would be that Lowell Road minus Martin's Landing, the other one would be the Main Street mixed use overlay that that exists, but would need. Provision in order to actually comply with.
Right.
So that's what's in here, um, now, because the Main Street mixed use overlay bylaw already is in our zoning. It's not a new full article, that's why I put red line in there. So red line shows what the zoning is already in our, in our bylaw, and it shows how. If the C P C wanted to propose something that was three A compliant, how it would need to change in order to be part of a plan that would with that and. That makes sense.
He does, um. Yeah, it gets a little, and that's why I wanted to cover the citizens petitions too, cause that further muddies things, because they're again. Bringing up the formerly voted on articles, um. In lots, if you will, parcels that are now maybe not on the table, and that that would be Martin's Landing, at least, um. So. I think. I think it's a good. It's probably. It's probably a good time to talk about, I think, what Mr. Yul's gang had, which. Danielle, you and I spoke is, and and just to give a real little history lesson, but last time we met. We were talking about the same subject and what to, what to do, and we kind of got some. Feedback from everybody, Max was on Zoom, Max unfortunately had to drop off or whatever, so we got to a point where we were voting. On whether to explore these other parcels or Danielle put together some different scen- scenarios. Um, and I was willing to, you know, look at those parcels, take a look at them, see what, you know, see what there is born, I think you were as well. Jeff, you were opposed. And Ed was opposed and Ed's grounds were really, really valid, he said, have we notified these? Parcels yet, you know, where's the parcels? To which, you know, we all, you know, know, so let's, let's do that, and that's, that was why Ed was a no. So we had a two to two and I made the call, cause I, Max dropped off, I'm like, well, it doesn't hurt to just look at them, but. We we got kind of corrected after the fact, right, by council telling us that technically. You know, that wasn't really a valid, you know, if you get two and two. There's some, there's some ambiguity there, whether that that was a.
Wasn't a vote.
Well, it wasn't a vote, right, but it was kind of testing, we were about to vote, I think, and then Max kind of. Got off there, so we got a little into the gray area there.
I think the issue ended up being that, um. We were looking at the closing of the warrant, the deadline for submission of articles, and so the C P C needed to decide amongst yourselves, whether you wanted to vote to submit. Um, those warrant articles, and so. What town council had advised us is that, um, if the C P C as the majority does not vote to be the sponsor of the article. They're not the sponsor of the article, so, um, because of that, there was no C P C sponsored article submitted.
Right.
Directly.
Right. Okay, so technically, we're, we're, we're okay, is that, is that what you're getting at?
Well, I think we left that meeting with the understanding that they were being submitted to the warrant, it was after we heard back from town council. That we realized that, no, that's not, you know, the proper procedure for it, so I did not submit them on behalf. To the warrant.
I just, I just wanna point out real quick that. To make sure that you understand, we're not talking about that original proposal anymore, we're talking about the ones.
A new one.
Yeah, the new one.
Yeah, a new proposal, we have, we have the Main Street, uh.
Right.
Which already, which actually mentioned, already has a similar overlay already there. So we really, a- again, not huge change. And I think some building heights and.
Right, I think the thinking, and again, others, please speak up after, but. But the thinking was from, at least this, the perspective of this group is, we voted, we, we, the C P C and the town. Uh, uh, October twenty fourth voted down what now the citizens petition has brought up, and that. Which are two parcels, Edge, Edgewood and um, and Martin's Landing. And we thought it would be crazy to just bring it up again, now, we did put that forth. Um, for the deadline that the state requested in, what was it, March was the deadline?
Yeah.
We did do the action plan and it was the identical action plan, and that was just to put the foot in the door, keep the state off our back. You know, and then figure out what we're gonna do moving forward, um, so just to under, so people understand why we, well. Were contradicting ourselves, didn't you put that thing forward? We did, we put the same action plan forward as a placeholder, knowing we needed to rethink things, at least this body knew that. We're not comfortable going right back to the same meeting and asking, and doing the exact same parcels again, there's gotta be something changed here. And so that's where during that period. Danielle started to look at other ways, and so there's, there is the existing multifamily overlays on Main Street with the parcels that we're gonna talk about tonight. And there's a way to keep Edgewood in there, it's a very sizable property, and then go to these properties along Main Street. And and possibly look at, so it's not one parcel, but it's a bunch of parcels to see if that will work. And so that's why I think the thinking. As I'm trying to explain myself to the public here, that's the thinking is, okay, I'm, I'm open to hearing, you know, what's another way to do this? So that we could possibly stay compliant with the state, um, but at the same rate, maybe, you know. Um, you know, set it ease, the folks at Martin's Landing, which are, if. To their point, are in a restrictive, age restricted area, they're, they're worried about changes to that. These other parcels aren't age restricted, they're commercial, um, properties along Main Street that have a present use. Yeah, have a mixed use and have a, have a presently have a multifamily overlay on them through a special permit, you know, understanding. And with limitations, they're having some, um, you know, mixed use or business use in that number, but. They, they're closer to, you know, being an open vessel, like, where something might be possible, now, we think about towns like. You know, whether it's Andover or Reading on both sides, they have. You know, plenty of mixed uses, you go down and then have apartments on on the top floors and have apartment complexes all intermingled with. Commercial on Main Street, and they do it pretty well, um, we don't do it very well here, and and I know a lot of it is, uh, you know, the presence of just subject. So that's where we were going with, in a lot of ways, that's what I'm trying to explain, so here we are now, um, I think we still have. Um, a a vote on this commission based on, you know, the last, uh, meeting. That is opposed to this, the M B T A Communities Act, so we're working with that reality, that's a reality, and, um, but. I just, I'm trying to find a way just to at least look at these other properties, so I suspect. And I see, I've read a couple, or one of the letters, that there's people in in the audience maybe today. Um, from those properties or maybe in town even, that, you know, are really questioning these lots perhaps. There could be people for us doing this with those lots, so that's, I think, what we wanna hear from. A little bit, um, but I wanted, again, actually hear from the members of the commission first, and then we'll just go out to. The audience here, as as well as online, and get people's comments, for against this other kind of, um. Configuration of lots to satisfy the M B T A, um, Communities, um, Act requirements. Mr. Griffin, I'll start with you.
Um, I know it's, sorry, Dave, so first of all, I think, and I'm thinking about this, so we have right now, we have three. Citizens petitions that are active, that have been pushed forward. And it it's, and that's why I had asked Danielle if that was that identical plan to the other, I wanted to make sure. I think that for us to be entertaining, anything else. I think it's like we have two. Parts of our government, town government, kind of like doing two different things, that, um. So I mean, I'm opposed to to any discussion or any, um. Any other, um. Possibility of bringing the three A zoning law back in any fashion, so. Anybody who lives in the the address, and I've received phone calls too. Uh, anybody who is a part of those addresses that you guys added the last time we met, because I was opposed to that as well. Um. I just think that because of what we have already, we're dealing with one part of the three A. Uh, uh, zoning, uh, over in the original that got brought back. Now we're telling the community, oh, and by the way, the C P C. Came up with this other plan that we might potentially do, that I think we're really, really, really gonna confuse the public. And. One of the reasons why I actually got involved in being on this board. Was because I was really adamantly opposed to that type, those types of confusion. When I saw how the sole project was laid out, there was some things that. Didn't make sense and a lot of people didn't understand, I think if the C P C. Collectively decides to adapt what you guys have put together and push it forward, one, I think it's going to be. Very, very confusing for for the town, so how do we get up and explain it? How do we explain that? Like, if you haven't followed this process from the beginning and you're not paying atten- attention to all the detail? That we've all grown with and and gotten to 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 see. Someone outside of the these walls and these five members. You're gonna throw them for a loop with this one, I believe. I would ask respectfully that the C P C not move forward with the plan that you guys put put out there. Uh, in order to take some of that confusion away, so the one, and I I forget the addresses, but like the Kitty's property, the. Um, uh, the donut place and the new, um, Heffron or the old Heffron property and 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 those properties. Uh, and then also too, not to muddy the waters even more. That the twenty twenty, um, the master plan, when they drew that, like, that was all part of this too. So anybody who's actually read those things in the past, like, here it comes, here comes this big headache again. That just kind of fizzled away and didn't work, like, all that green space, and we're gonna build a Gillette Stadium, and we're gonna do, I mean, whatever it was, I'm only kidding, but. Um, I I just think that. I think in fairness to the people, I think we're throwing way too much at them, too fast with this, like, second option. I just don't think it's a good idea, I I. I I mean. Again, I I've received phone calls, a couple of phone calls on the properties that you guys proposed, and people that I spoke to are adamantly opposed to it. Um, um, my wife even got a phone call on one of these, um, so, um. I I really just don't think it's a good move for the C P C to be trying to to. Really confuse this matter.
Good. I appreciate the, next.
Um, I really agree with that latter point you made, Jeff, in the sense that we haven't really evaluated. Like, the big picture of what this is gonna look like, and we haven't even talked about the ten year and the twenty year plan. All these proposals came up for what we wanted to do, twenty eight, and, uh, this would definitely influence that, so. I just feel like we're so quick to rush into this, I think we should take the time to to look more, and I also think that. The town voted, at least in this last vote, to be noncompliant, that's just, that's how we voted. And I don't think a year of noncompliance is gonna bring us to financial ruin. And I think it would put us in a better position long term to at least not be making a a rash, quick decision. In order to quickly get into compliance and to do something that's not in the best interest of the long term. I think we can afford to be out of compliance for another year. Maybe even two years, you know, and maybe even bring back the the article that we just showed. Um, I just don't think it's a smart idea to jump into something so quickly without actually evaluating it, looking at what is the long term goal of the town? Because. We have a cash flow problem anyways, and more people is only gonna mean more problems. If we can't get to the root of 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 actually generating revenue, um, with who we have, we're not gonna be able to do it with what we have, Warren. I just, I don't think that's a reasonable thing to expect, this town's continuously grown and continuously had a budget issue. So there's something deeper at the root that we need to fix, is, no, I don't think more people will fix it to begin with. But I agree with Jeff, I think we need to take time and we voted for noncompliance, I don't think a year of noncompliance will, will kill us as a town, I really don't.
Thanks, Max, appreciate it. Warren?
Um, well, I I mean. As we all know, this is, this isn't a suggestion from the state, this is a law, the law they made, and that our senators and our House of Representatives. All got together, State Massachusetts have voted for it. The governor's made no bones about the fact, Danielle was saying, every little speech she gives, includes this requirement of this need for housing. Um, we've paid a considerable amount of money over the last few years to consultants to come in and try to figure out. What would make this town grow, especially in Main Street, and there, uh, every one of them. Says that what we really need to do is, we need more housing out there, we need more people, because we we need customers for those businesses and those for those. Businesses to survive and. And and they've all, they all said the same thing, so we would, I would hope that they're, since this is their job, that they're smarter than we are, and we should probably listen. Um. Um, but again, ultimately, we will comply, uh, because the state will just keep piling on penalties. Um, because again, it's a law, not a suggestion. Um, so we're gonna be, we're, that's what we're gonna be faced with ultimately, so, um. I think I do agree on is that we we, you know. I think that the Martin's Landing people, uh, receive a lot of misinformation about what could actually happen there. Uh, again, our town council that we have is is also a town council for, actually, of a hundred and thirty or some communities in the state, so they. I I don't remember exactly how many, but for a lot of the communities in the state, they are town councils, so they are very well versed. Overall, we get, we've had it for a long time, very well versed in the state, as far as what works and, you know, and what's true. There's, uh, where those things go, so when we, uh, asked them the questions. And they said that, and they gave us the answers, those answers are disputed by. Other people, you know, you know, we, we. We've already paid town council a substantial amount of money on this particular issue to show up at all these meetings. So how much more money do we wanna wanna spend in that direction? And there's the town, and there's the state, we we get to the point where the state starts pursuing each, each particular town. Um, which they say they will do, that'll be another big cost that will go on. I think Steve O'Leary tried to put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in their budget to try to pay a town council just for this. I I, you know, I'd rather see two, three new teachers at school than than just throw money at something that we know in the end game is gonna be a loss. So I just, I just think that we need to, uh, to, uh, look at this, but I, I I do think that we would, you know, that we would like to look at. The the new proposal, and again. Um, it's, it it, and they're right, another thing, and that is that explaining to people. That the zoning, that we, the overlay district that we already have over there, already has housing and. And everything in it, I mean, sorry, we already did a long time ago, went to town meeting, there wasn't even two questions, you took what you would, unanimous, unanimous vote, there was not even a question on it. When we did that, so, um, so now we're trying to do the same thing, and now. When we did that, so um so now we're trying to do the same thing and now all of a sudden it's a problem, which. Uh but I would, I do think that notification of people and what's gonna happen over there and the next, and a couple of meetings and then. The next explanation, which probably couldn't be done adequately before town meeting. But it would be a good idea, you know, I I don't know, I do, I do think that's a problem. So um I I knowing, knowing what I know and I've been doing this a long time. And I've dealt with a lot of stuff for the state over the last thirty three years. And um they always win, and that's it, all of ours only comes from the state, we don't decide. So you know, they uh, that's where ours only comes from, so when they make a law like that. Um, and and the other thing that dislays me is the ADU law came in and it came to town meeting and it wasn't three questions. And it went through, and yet it is a far more intrusive law than this. So, so I mean, I get, I think the big problem is education. Okay, we need to explain to the people out in the main street that we're not really changing much for them, but we we are giving them the option of changing what they do with their property. Without having to go through a special permit process, which is kind of a gift. Um, any big project will tell you that the majority of the problems are in the permitting. Once the permitting, and you know that because you do all, you do work with uh with people doing. Once the permitting is done, the project can go forward, everybody's happy, the permitting is generally a killer. And to give them a a free ride on that is, you know, usually taken as a benefit, not as a as a detriment, so um. Um, um, so I think we should, uh, I mean, and I I I, I know a lot of people are in Martin's Landing, I have a lot of friends there. And um they've, they're totally panicked uh by all this, by a a by a. A bunch of claims that I don't think are valid, uh and neither does our town council, again, we pay this, these people a lot of money to give us good advice. To listen to them, um, so that's, that's unfortunate that that happened. Um, but by the same token, the area that where you, you know. You know, edge was good, that that that's fine, but the area we're talking about adding on to to make our fifty acres is um. Is an area that we've already zoned that way, so I mean, it's, we're already there. So um I I don't see what the what the issue would be there, other than I can believe that prompt notification. And sometimes them to ask questions to understand that the changes are minor, that there's actually a benefit that they get out of it, so.
Please, Warren, somebody's right.
Um, I kind of just, my opinion kind of falls falls in line with uh Jeff and Max, um. You know, it was voted down by the residents, they knew what the repercussions were when they made those votes. Since our last meeting, I've been contacted by, well, I'm not gonna say a ton of people, but a a fair amount of people. And they just, you know, one of them, the quote was, they don't wanna see the town, they're they're just tired of this, they wanna go away. They don't want this being, their quote was twisted to try and fit what the state wants us to do. Um, I'm yet to find one person to contact me saying they want me to support this. Um, you know, I've done pretty much a no all along, just based on this is not what the residents appear to be, uh we already have one letter in the file here. Um, but one of the new proposed properties being opposed to this. Um, you know, so right now, just based on the way that the the town voted and the feedback that I'm getting for this, you know, possible second proposal, um I just. Don't see it as going forward.
Thanks, Eric, and I I again, just I'll say, cause I already kind of came with similar mind endings at the beginning, but. I I do share with you that I'd like to hear from the owners of those properties. That'd be the only regret, like that, and we don't have a lot of time, so that's one of the realities. Is just to hear from the those different owners, we got to hear a lot from Martin's Landing owners. And we got, and the whole lead up to it, you know, up to June, the first meeting town meeting, and then the second one. And that's my only fear is like, is there enough time to really get feedback and really weigh whether this makes sense for. Out the town and certainly those owners, so um with that, I think I'll just open it up to here in the room and then we'll, we can go to Zoom after that, but. If anyone would like to um comment, whether you're an owner or you're for or against, or anything. Maybe to get up to say your name and address.
Okay.
John, there um. Having and and.
Sorry, two. What is your last name, please?
Weir, W E I R. And the address. Uh sixty seven Winter Street.
Thank you.
So it's Jeff's point, when they, the master plan came out, um, I said, where are my houses? And I'm gonna leave to my children, my grandchildren, et cetera, where 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 are all the other buildings, what's going on with this? And that that it was a big traumatic thing for us, like, what's the town trying to do? But um, my mother-in-law owns the property that was put on the list. And and they're like, why are they putting her residence on the list, like all that? And now we're trying to figure that out, because I think your information is incorrect on your title searches or wherever you're getting that that information.
I'm sorry, what information is incorrect?
Uh would be seventy three Winter Street.
Yes, what?
Seventy three eight Winter Street.
What's incorrect about it?
I think, I think, I think those are incorrect because there's been a change in um. Um, um, someone passed away, all the things have been changed.
Associated with the overlay of the property.
But also we have bought, oh, oh, I have three, we have three properties that have bought all this. You know, configuration now, so that's what I, I'm like, why, so they're just trying, um, are they just trying to redefine? To appease the state. And for what, to what end, uh you know, because we're not within, we're a buffer town, we're not within, we don't have that service of train service and so. So that that's, that's how we extend sign. And then like, what are they, what's somebody gonna put in next door of my residential property?
So, so John, a couple of questions, so are you, are you one of the properties or you're saying you have bought one of the, one of the, or some?
So I have bought one, uh, that's what we're trying to figure out, because my mother-in-law is seventy three Winter Street. And then it says seventy three eight Winter Street, I don't understand that one thing.
It's just what our property records and the associated tax.
So it's her residential property?
I'm sorry?
It's her residential property?
So I have a list of addresses that are within a zoning district that exists already. It's a list of nine properties, those are the properties that got the letter, those are the properties that they're discussing with going.
And then other adder descriptions, which are changing what is governed now, like you're lessening the. The height restriction heights of buildings and so on.
Do you want me to explain how the overlay would work?
I'm sorry, miss.
I can explain how the overlay would work, but they're discussing.
That would help too.
Okay, so.
You don't have to go into great detail.
No, there's only a few bulleted changes, I think it's good to Jeff, just so Danielle can explain, you know, what the changes would be in them.
The underlying zoning on all of these properties is highway business. There's nothing in highway business that was being discussed to change, so all the commercial uses that are allowed today remain. Highway business would be untouched. Highway business allows you to build to a height of sixty feet or four stories, that would not change. There are, there is, there is one overlay district, and what an overlay district does on a property. Is it can further restrict it or it can further add to what's permitted, the overlay district that exists already on these properties. Um, allows residential, nothing else in highway business is allowed to have residential. These nine properties were rezoned within overlay to also, in addition to the underlying highway business, to also allow residential. If you want residential though, and you own one of those properties, you need to get a special permit. And there is currently a requirement that a portion of it has to be, twenty percent of it at least has to be. What the CPC is looking at is a, is changing the terms of that overlay. Where those properties that are special, that can have residential and nobody else can have residential, would continue to be allowed to have residential, only instead of having to get a special permit for it, it would be allowed by right. No need for a special permit. But if you did want to develop residentially. Those properties then would be subject to forty feet in height limit and three stories rather than sixty feet. Which is currently what's allowed, sixty feet, if you wanna have a residential apartment building on one of those properties that you own. You can come to the CPC for a special permit, you can get that, it could be sixty feet tall, it could be four stories, but you need a special permit and you have to include a commercial people. This is a different option and it would change the terms of that, so that it's easier to get the approval for residential. You're allowed to have it, but you need a special permit, now you wouldn't have to get the special permit and you would no longer have to require a commercial limit. So that would be the difference, it doesn't remove any of the highway business rights that people have. It changes the terms of the special residential district that is allowed in addition, that kind of makes sense? And also.
Yeah, I understand all this.
Yeah, and it's.
Um, can the state come in and 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 change or?
No.
This at all?
No, so what it was, this, when a property is rezoned. It is always up to the owner, whether they choose to use that zoning. They can build to the zoning or not, they can choose to say, oh, you know, I'm not ready to sell, I'd like to put a residential building on my property, I'm gonna get permits to do that. Or they can say, you know, I've had a commercial business there, I've had a gas station, I've had a restaurant, I'm gonna keep it there forever. It it's up to the owner, the state does not have any special rights. Just because it is an identified district that happens to comply with three A, if that's the direction the town chose to go. It does not give the state any particular extra rights over.
Question, is Kitty's one twenty three Main Street, is it?
Yes.
It's not on the letter, the number.
So we are legal address for Kitty with zero winter.
Oh, okay.
I don't know why, but it's just not, we just don't have the one twenty three.
She had a portion of the address there, but yes, it is.
Could you say, could you say your name, please?
Sorry, anytime you speak, you just.
Oh, I'm sorry, being a brush up. Oh, so we we weren't aware of that, cause I'm involved with Kitty's too.
Okay.
But that is a whole nother entity of of partnerships on that property, which need, should be notified as well. They're not in this, they're not in this power realm.
I, every, every address that's been associated with the the tax assessors, legal tax list has. Gotten the letter, if if someone has not received the letter, then.
But you're probably on the title, there should be a proper title search.
It's just, I I, we don't do title searches, we just, the tax list is, that's, I mean.
But some partners aren't involved with the adder rest, you know, that are on the, that are on the land itself. Right?
Yeah.
They may have disputes as well, I'm not that I'm disputing, but. Um.
Okay, um, go ahead, sir.
Uh Ed Spenny from sixty six Winter Street, um, I would. Came because I wasn't notified, I was told by somebody else this was happening. So we just built a new building and we own that property, so I would.
They did send a letter to your address, but I don't know where it was from.
Sixty six Winter, we never know, probably wouldn't have been.
If he, they're still, are they still the legal owner on the tax records?
Well, he shouldn't be, we, we only found it three months, one month ago, so, but. So our address is sixty six Winter Street. And we would like to be notified, so I came tonight not knowing what, and give a reasonably good explanation, so. Um, I'm not sure I like, you know, going down in in stories and and stuff, but at this point, I've done what I've done. We've waited for a long time, so. So I just wanted to stand with hell on, and usually when we get notified, we have something.
And I just wanna say unrelated, but um when you came to us with your plans, you know, you never know, a person's not followed through with everything, it's a beautiful building. We're really happy to have you in North Reading, um thanks for showing up tonight even too, so you're already taking part. Um, obviously for good reason, you know, it's one of the processes, but um again, you did a great, great job, it's a great building, so.
Yeah, you you let, you say you didn't, you didn't care about lowering the, lowering height of street, but it's not, you can still leave the sixty.
So you're still good doing the sixty.
Absolutely, it's just that it's a special permit. It's a special permit, this sixty D, for the lower, you do it by right, no special permit.
So Danielle, so Warren brings up a good, I was thinking the same thing, so they can still take the avenue, um I'm gonna go special permit. I'm going for sixty, but with that will come twenty percent um business, right, is that, is that like how you're up to doing it?
They asked if you wanted me to leave that option in and the consensus was no, but certainly that could be added back in, where the all, all of the options that remain today in the zoning could could stay in.
Right.
And this could be.
But would that, would that be, that's okay with the state that you still have a special permit requirement?
Because all the state requires is that you zone for a particular requirement, not that you force that requirement. So you could have three, four, five overlays on a property, if one of them complies, that's all the state is asking for.
Yes, I, I may also agree with Warren. Yeah, um, to um to, yeah, to, yeah, again, to say, to remind that this uh. This uh overlay are that are already exist in that, you know, you still have all the rights, like you said. To um to build according to the what, what the highway business district uh zoning has here, so.
That's a good explanation, thank you. Need anybody else up there? Mr. Yeo?
Do you read the Bible, um?
I do, Bible here.
New Testament.
Very good Bible.
Okay.
It was called Robert's Rules of Order.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff Yeo, four twenty seven Park Street. Here in wonderful North Reading, um. The reason why I have the Robert's Rules, we, because when I watched the meeting on March seventeen, Patrick's name. I noticed that the Robert's Rules wasn't really paying attention to that, kind of concerned. Um, the issue that you had in particular with the motion, the, the. Consensus, went back into it, vote, all those words were used in in the, the meeting interchangeably. Okay, now, I understand that. In fact, Mr. Jeff, you, you were completely positive on on whether you could move forward or not. All right, and I and I appreciate that, but you were deciding to do it anyway, which is contrary to the Robert's Rules of Town Meeting. Um, I think what I found disturbing in that whole process was that it was two to two tie. And the most experienced person in this room, still today, knew that you couldn't do that. And prefer not to say a word about that, okay? Warren, I mean, I have to say, you know that you couldn't go forward, and you could use your expertise you have throughout the town and this respect that you have. To let him know that he's not, I'm sorry, you can't move forward with this, okay? Eventually, excuse me, that's okay, if you have, wanna challenge me or something, feel free to do so, but I'm finished. Um, then it went to. Be reconciled by our lawyers, post money faculties, right, okay, so it went to the lawyers. For no reason, I, we had to spend money on the lawyers. But I think this book here, I don't know what the budget is, but I think this book here. Should be given to the chairman every time. There's a new chairman or what have you, give them this book so that they can have it next to them, and if they have doubt, they don't have to call the lawyer. They can maybe take a quick reference and say, you know what, this is, this is what it says here, we go by town, town by law, so that we go by Robert's Rules. With exception, but that is for the exception, we have town meeting, all right, if it's a tie vote, it loses. All right, but it was being pushed forward. I have to say that the conversation we were hearing tonight is unnecessary, because. Town meeting voted against it, you did your job, you did a really good job, we had, town had uh hearings on it. North Reading Republican Town Committee had two hearings on it. And again, the abilities of both sides, and you never went to any of those meetings. And I know you think the lawyers that we have, that took the same law exam that the lawyers at KP Law did, all right? In the same field, in the same business, I I know you, you're not concerned about that, uh Mr. Warren, but. They are very well renowned and respected, okay, at least throughout uh eastern Massachusetts, specifically in this this area. Okay, so. The other issue that that you keep talking about is misinformation. And you have no idea if it's misinformation, because you never attended the other side, you only heard one side. And you only heard what KP Law had said, you were not concerned about what transpired, all right, at the meetings by the uh. By the Republican Town Committee, so it was a one sided perspective that you had, it was a third perspective that you had. Um, and we keep mentioning Martin's Landing. Okay, I'm gonna tell you something about that meeting in October that we had. Do you have any idea what the makeup of that meeting was? How many people were from Martin's Landing? How many people were from the town and what did they vote on, did they vote on the plan? Or did they vote on the the issue of the changing of the bylaw? Okay, so, but what did they vote? Okay, so what did, what did they vote? You're trying to make a change. To think that that change now is gonna be helpful going forward. I think what you heard back here, just by this example, all right? Was that um, it's not the, it's not the plan. It's the concept of the state imposing its will on the people of North Reading. So do you know how many, what the percentage difference in the meeting made of the uh, town meetings? Seven, seven, you know? No, I was giving an idea. Twenty-nine point six percent at the October meeting for Martin's Landing. That meant seventy point four percent were from the rest of the town. So they, they didn't even consume the majority of the vote, and it was a significant number. It wasn't a close vote. It was a significant number, and they were only twenty-nine point six percent of that vote. So that meant seventy percent plus of the town doesn't want this. Okay, so I think that this conversation, you know, you did your job. You you got all the perspective. You you took a lot of time to make, get it right. At least, I can't say that much for the selectmen. Like, you did your job. You wanted the town to vote on it. But no color came up and said, we hired you to do the job. You're just supposed to make the decision. And you made a decision. You made a decision. You wanted the people to decide. The people decided. You accepted that decision. All right, but now you're going back on your word by even having a discussion on a possibility. Of changing the plan to appease the state and think that the town is going to go for it. And yet the town voted at seventy percent, uh, uh, a majority of that seventy percent voted, which was even greater than the Martin's Landing. So Martin's Landing, Martin's Landing became a very, very minute moment. If nobody came to Martin's Landing, that still would have failed, but it would have been close, but it still would have failed. So that's why I'm urging you that a citizen's petition, I know you have to deal with that. As far as anything else is concerned, you're only muddying, muddying the waters and causing confusion to the people that it's just another thing that they're gonna wear, it's like wearing them down. That's what you do. You wear them down and say, they're gonna do it anyway. I don't want that. Okay, it's already been decided. I don't think we should support any new plan. Okay? And I think you should stick to your decision, um, at town meeting, which would be against the petition. Okay, and I understand there is, in one of those two petitions, they guarantee the, the um, it won't affect the Martin's Landing people. Okay, I forget exactly the wording on that. Uh, they guaranteed on that. They can't do that. The state decides if they're gonna do, that's, that should be going. So please, just cut it off right now. Cut the ability cordial. Make sure that major decisions, you got two years. You may have a new administration in two years, and then deal with it under those circumstances. But at this time, you're really going back on your word by pushing anything forward. Thank you very much.
I just want, I want, out of respect too, so there's, there's kind of three, three things I heard. So one is the Robert's Rule, which I'm I'm gonna defer and let Warren kind of take it, because they were more directed um, at all. It's more so on Warren, because that's my mistake, you know, on the chair, I made a mistake. So first one's Warren's fault. The other one was on the misinformation and the other one's on, you know, um, the Martin's Landing. So, but I'm gonna let Warren talk first, then Jeff. What are you, okay? You're good. I just want, I just want to give you the opportunity. You could, you could say, I don't want to say a word, but.
I just, I just, um, you know this is the law, do you not? So you, you're, you're, you're saying disobey the law, just ignore the law.
You know, there's a, I don't know, they'll move to a different site.
The law was, was, was made by elected representatives, people we, we rep, that we elected to make these decisions. So um, for the state, okay, so um, to, to tell people it's okay to plant the law. I mean, eventually, um, eventually we will have to, we, eventually we'll, we'll comply. Uh, but what's the cost to getting to there?
You asking me a question or?
No.
Well, I would always say.
Well, I, so the, that, that, that whole decision about what the chairman's right and 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 rights are and strengths are of um, that's a little, that's a little gray, because I wasn't sure if that, if that was something he could, that could be done. Because over the years, we, it seems to me, we've given Danielle all kinds of charges to look things up and take care of things. So, I mean, it didn't seem that that was something that, uh, and and again, to reiterate, there was no vote. There was no vote taken, that there was just, I mean, just, with just a consensus. Um, as far as what we thought might be, um, what, what we thought about the situation. Similar to discussion for any of the things that come to Florida. So.
Yeah, I just, it, you know, I think that's, again, I take responsibility as a chair, and I think I was, at the time, we, as anyone knows, judging. But Max was on and then he vanished. No, no offense, Max, but that's where we were just going around getting everybody's consensus.
Yeah.
If Max had said, no, no, that's okay, Max, and I don't, no, no need to apologize to. But what I mean is, I was fully prepared. If Max said no, but now it's like, well, we got three to two, Danielle. There's reality, but we got, kind of, that surprised me. We had two to two. It wasn't a motion vote kind of thing. It was more just getting consensus. So I'm like, well, I don't think there's anything hurt moving forward with just exploring these art, these properties. With the caveat, they, they get notified, which was Ed's big point. So that's, again, my mistake. Again, I'm just, I'm just a volunteer. I'm not an expert, but a point taken on the Robert's Rule. Um, Jeff, you wanted to.
Yeah, so one, one thing I want to address, Mr. Yul, was what you said was that you, we went back on our word. I just want to declare, I did not go back on my word. This board may have, but I have always been opposed to this as you. So just to be clear. I have always stood on the ground as you. The people have made a decision and a choice, brought it to the table. So I, I just didn't want to be bundled in with that, just to clear that out.
Well, as far as people know with elected boards and stuff, as a body, when Congress votes for something. I know that as a body, I think Jeff was correct, but you're correct in saying, yeah, an individual member, I was against. So like, you're both correct.
By the same token, I've never, I've known how this is gonna end up. I never changed my mind either, because I know how this will end up. And at some point, um, at some point, the state's gonna push back pretty hard. And it's gonna get expensive, and then there's gonna be a bad plan. And they're gonna wonder, who, whose idea was this?
The producer, Jim. Okay, um, yeah, we, we, you know, just, I know, correct individually, uh. It's a, and, and, and the, oh, on commission. But the, the fact that the conversation we had is a problem unto itself. Okay, it's as if you're appeasing people who won't take no for an answer. I can have great respect for your opinion and your perspective and so on, all right? But I'd like to say in return, we made a decision. We're willing to face the consequences. All right, this is a bylaw, okay, that it bridges upon our own rule. And we don't want the state to do that. Period, okay? And so having the conversation all unto itself puts those with four, four hundred eighty-eight people who were at that meeting, I believe, off the top of my head. Um, so that meant it was a significant majority. These people are now wondering, why didn't you go to town meeting? Why did you dissipate? Why didn't, we should, it's like the state, the state, they're really nice to say. They changed the rules to accommodate themselves. Remember, they can change their rules anytime they want. No matter what we vote on now, because everything changes. Once it's done, they're gonna say, okay, now let's go to the next plan. Okay? The mission of the of the mission is, says here, the department's role will continue to be a new, new for economic development and growth while maintaining rule, residential character of the town. This will not, this will not maintain the rule that, that you must understand. Not in the long term. I know I'll be dead by then. I get that. Okay, so we'll all, so I.
Oh, Max.
But and and to Max, wait, about the town's master plan. Right, yeah, master plan. No one pays attention to that. Select board doesn't. It's okay, but you're, they're only concerned about the, the, um, um, what do they call that? The, uh, that, that the mission statement, but the, uh, but the strategic plan, they're only concerned about that. All right, so. We have three branches of government in the town. All right, we have select board, CPC, the school, the, the, the top branches. And in case of the CPC, we have no responsibilities. Select board has theirs. Select board thinks that if you don't agree with them, they're just gonna hold the rule. Mr. O'Leary lost in that battle on, in October miserably. But now he won't take no for an answer, so he's rallying up everybody to uh, get what he wants. And we, we just can't have that in the sample. We can't have people constantly saying not accepting a no, when anybody said no. So they get what they want.
Thanks, Jeff. I wanna give other people that. And I, I, I would say, because I think, you know, with no movement in, in, in position, no movement in position. I don't think very much movement in here, and I'd probably be the one that's guilty of moving, but I, 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 I just want to. So people understand, I'm a very principled person, but I'm also a realist too. Um, because as you get older, you get even more real, like of what, you know, you can, you can carry the flag. But at some point, you start, you bang into reality, you know, what the government is gonna let you do, what you can do, what you can permit, what you can't permit. Coming from a developer background, um, so I'm, the two kind of join together, and that's where, that's my background. And that's what's influencing me, because I'm all for, and I still believe it's a bad law. I still believe that the state shouldn't have any right to do what they're doing, just like with the ADU thing. I don't think they had any right to do it. But I also, like Warren, I have that reality, like, at some point, they're just gonna force this on us through extralegal means, and it's gonna be more painful when they do it that way. So, um, like any good mediator, I'm trying to figure out what's the best way that we get through this with less pain. But I absolutely appreciate both sides. I really do, you know, I appreciate so much both sides, because I really come from it, both sides. It's hard to be kind of in the middle clearly, but, um, I just wanted to give them know where I'm coming from. So I'll just open it back up. Do you have a comment?
Yes.
Sure, just say your name and your address and.
John Magus, who I have multiple properties on, in the highway business district.
Thanks for coming, John.
So, not enough, nothing, but I, I feel it's, I, I, I totally support Warren's point on this, and, but the other thing is, nobody can really build anything of any subsequent, eh, until we have sewerage in town. And that's not gonna happen at any time in the realistic future. So. What's wrong is just adopting it, moving it forward, because nobody can do anything with it anyways.
I kind of tend to agree with you, sadly so. And if they do system, it's, it's gonna be expensive, and as a landlord or developer yourself, you know, you know. I mean, it's gonna cost a lot of money to do some sort of plan, if you really have eyes on putting in a lot of departments in. You know, if it's another kind of business, you can do okay, you know, I mean, you'll probably be okay, but, um, yeah. And we're just, I look at Middleton, I, within me so much on what they're able to do on one fourteen, but they just have no hand. You know, they can, they can provide the systems, because they're just like us. They're on subject, but they're building like crazy there and doing pretty well too. The kind of things they're able to do, but they just have the, that land advantage.
But they don't have any housing.
That's true. Yeah, absolutely.
The only thing is, oh, I am across from the old town hall.
Right, right. So, uh, as far as anything. Okay, so, um, thanks, John. So I'm gonna, again, try to open it up. Uh, we'll go over to Zoom right now.
Um, Galvin?
Top line.
Hi, can you hear me?
Welcome back, people.
Thanks, Caitlin Galvin, thirty-three Sheehan Drive. I wanted to start off by saying thank you, because I think you've done the right thing by continuing to talk about this, as painful as it is. It's the only real responsible approach when faced with something this serious. And I'm just having a hard time thinking about this, because the state has said that all discretionary grants are now subject to this. And if you listen to the budget hearing last night, we were talking about whether we can still afford to have a police officer stationed and RPD twenty-four seven. And so when those are the kinds of things we're considering cutting, every dollar really does count. And with something that important, I think it has to be at town meeting. We vote on the budget every year. There's no reason that this can't come back up at town meeting. I have a lot of faith that the North Reading residents can understand why this is coming up again, what the context is this time, and why we need to continue having this discussion. And I think particularly when there's citizens petitions and things like that at stake. It's hard for me to see that the CPC should kind of be the gatekeeper of town meeting here. I just think, let it go to the floor, and if it fails, it fails. Thanks.
Thanks, Kevin. Is he an Amy? And is he Nick too? Or Steve's left for a moment. Nick, are you just trolling here? Or do you wanna talk?
But just hanging, Dave. Thank you.
You're, you're welcome to be here, Nick. I appreciate your, your presence.
Appreciate you.
Is there anybody else, any, anything, even people have spoken before? It's okay if you want to speak again. You guys are good? Yeah, so I think, um, definitely, um, what you get to with volunteers is, you know, some stumbling and mistakes, and I'll be the first to admit, that's definitely me. I'm coming up on the end of my second term, so six years, still making mistakes. I still look to Danielle for answers on ninety-nine point five percent of everything. Um, she's the professional here that, you know, knows and helps us a lot, so I really appreciate the job that Danielle's done too, and being creative. Because when we, after the vote in October, really not really after that vote, because we just thought like, okay, let's just, we all just collectively wanted to not talk about EBT for, through the holidays. But I think when, when January hit and the SJC ruling kind of hit thereafter, you know, we were forced to kind of just at least talk about it again, and that's how we got to where we are. And I think, I, I just want to commend Danielle for, um, you know, being creative about trying to find some other ways. Because we, we had the conversation where it's like, we should take Martin's Landing off the table. It's clearly not popular. Um, we can't keep forcing the same thing.
Okay.
So I think you've done that, and I, and especially you did a really good job explaining the breakdown, you know, whatever, fifteen, twenty minutes ago. Um, and I find like, almost in a way, if we had started with those, those parcels to begin with, we, it would have probably been approved, you know what I mean? If it got voted on, you know, not necessarily with this commission, but, um, because I do think there's very, it gives, it gives those parcels a lot of options. They're business partial, parcels, there's already an overlay on them. Um, it seems more, it's just more palatable to those properties and where they are too. Like, that's where we want to develop. That's where we want to have, you know, we, we need people so that they can support businesses on, um, on Main Street. So again, can't go backwards, but that's why I think we're, we're, we're stumbling. I get that. But I agree, uh, with Ms. Galvin that I don't want to be the one that kills this thing or whatever. And I really respect Jeff's comment, but I. And I really respect Jeff's comment, but I do think that like, and it, and so Jeff, just to be clear. It's probably, it's not gonna be sponsored by this commission, but if someone, some other body, which appears like potentially could be the select board, it could be citizens petition, if it gets there, you know, there's not a lot of control we have. Uh, beyond us, the town has other ways, legal ways to put stuff, articles forward, and, you know, and I just, I feel the same way that I'd rather have it be six hundred people or whatever that make this call. And if it's a resounding no again, you know, by, by the town, like, really, honestly, everyone then absolutely needs to say this is it, you know, this, we can't keep bringing this up every town meeting, you know, because I think the town's spoken. Um, I thought we were gonna get a better turnout in the October meeting, because everyone, when I hear from people that say, well, you guys kind of filled up the meeting with a bunch of anti-MTK people, it's like, well, everyone got plenty of notice on the June town meeting, you know. That this was coming, you know, it wasn't like this was a sleeper, you know, uh, town meeting notification, it came up, it was, it got deferred. Uh, there was a lot of fanfare at that June town meeting, so when it went to October, I thought, you know, everyone that needed to be there, that wanted to be there, was there. Um, so I, I kind of, you know, when you hear people say, well, it just barely made it, or, or, or you guys loaded up. It's like, no, I think the people that wanted to be there were there, and they voted, and they voted no. So I know, Jeff, you think I'm making an argument for the, your point, which it is, but I do think situation changed a little bit in January. And we're forced to kind of just relook at it, um. And, uh, and again, I, I do think, oh, and just with the state, the point that Ms. Galvin also made, which I was gonna make, which is it used to just be the seventeen grants, but now any grant they're adding to it, i- i- if, you know, if you're complying with state law. So that's their way around it, it's not in the law anymore. The grant now has language in it that says if you're complying with state law. So they've gotten, they've gotten another way around it, and if you think that it's gonna stop, like, if the state, uh, they're not creative enough to keep doing this kind of stuff, then you're crazy, it's gonna just keep happening, um, but.
It's gonna cost the town a lot.
But it'll, it probably will, and that's what worries me, um, so, again, like, it's, and it's hard for me to say all that, but I the one that got up to two town meetings, very anti against this thing, but I have some, some reality DNA in me.
That's also, I, I mean, I think of that, I do, I also believe in that first, uh, in that first meeting where they, where the, where that no vote was taken. And there was a lot of discussion about the Martin's Landing, even though there may have not been that many people. I think there was a lot of compassion for them in that meeting, after they spoke, thinking that they were gonna be heard. And the people definitely voted not to hurt those people over there, and I think that was a good point. Yeah, not to, because the, it, people were saying, Martin's Landing was saying that this would destroy their, their ability to do this, they would ruin their. There'd be five bedrooms in their houses, in their, in their apartments and all that. And so I think there was plenty, plenty of compassion for them about not wanting to damage them, so I think that was a component of it as well.
Alright, well, yeah, we can't go too much back with any of this, but, uh, I appreciate everyone taking part in the discussion. Any, anybody else wanna say anything? Good, okay, so Danielle, we, is this also on the agenda again for the fifteen?
It's, um, no, but these are not, because these were not submitted to the warrant, there's no public hearing that's scheduled.
Except for those citizens petition.
So the citizens petitions are, so we did have to schedule a public hearing for those, so that's the fifteen. And as with the others, the citizens petition, it's a bit too.
Okay, so help me here then, because I'm, I'm, again, we just back to the same point, is the if that's gonna be the partit, if that's gonna be the article that we're forced to vote on, like, you know, again, it's unfortunate, you know. Because it's not really what you want, so is, is there, as I mentioned, and I guess I didn't really close the loop with you, is what I heard, there, there was another citizens petition, or there could be, because it's already past the deadline, or?
It's past the deadline for citizens petition, um, the select board on their own are allowed to put anything on the warrant that they want up until the signing of the warrant. But, um, you know.
Is there any discussion with them on that, that end?
They, I mean, if you wanted to ask them to put something on, you could ask, but they would be the sponsor, and it would be at their initiative, and they could say yes, or they could say no.
Right, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Alright. So, um, any other new business, because you already went over your stuff, but anybody else have any new business, any updates from any, um, boards or anything like that? I'll say, uh, we're competing a lot, the fire station committee's negotiating a lot. We had a response study that was done by MRI associates, um, and you kind of told the story that a lot of us in town are already, you know, aware of, that the development over on the, on the north side, the north west side has been, you know, happening over time, and it's kind of, since our, since our principal headquarters, a fire station downtown gets, you know, in a way, further and further away from those, and those locations multiply a little bit, like Martin's Landing and stuff, um. It's starting to become more and more evident that a station's needed now, we've heard that for years and stuff like that, but it, it really starts to get stark when we can see like just by having a station somewhere, um, on the north side of twenty-eight would just improve response times for so many more residents, um, and, and we'll kind of get in, we're doing some public outreach to let people understand the study a little bit more. Um, we also have an ar, we have a, an article on the, uh, June warrant, uh, requesting money for a feasibility study. We already put together an RFP that is going out, or actually is in the system, I think, right now for an architect to, uh, architects to bid on, um, doing some study for us for a, um, a north station, you know, a second station, as well as a different way to maybe renovate headquarters, um, so it would be less, lower and smaller in scale, because right now, the way that renovation was done was to really just blow out the existing station. So there's lots of dorm rooms, there's lots of space and all that, not a lot of parking space still, but there's a lot of in the bay, they expanded the bay in the front, the back, all this kind of stuff, that could all get vastly diminished if you did another station. You, you'd make really the other station your headquarters. So, that's all the stuff that's in the works, um, there's a lot of good people working on it, it's, it's good, everyone. So we're starting to get some kind of momentum and stuff, and it's fun, because it's been a little, I don't, yeah, for a while. But, uh, more to come, you'll probably read about it in the transcript and other things like that, sorry, go ahead.
I have just a little update from Transportation Committee, which, uh, I, to be honest with you, I really enjoyed working with this community. They, they really, they really had their hearts in it, and, um, so we met with, uh, three, uh, seniors at the high school um, last week, and, um, myself, Willie and Diane Norris. And they have a civic, uh, program that they're putting together, having to do with transportation. And they've come, you know, they're, uh, talking to the state and to the, uh, DOT and everybody for their, for this, and they wanted to interview us as far as what we've done, what we've done in North Reading, for as far as transportation, but, so they were very active, actively involved in working. They're, they're pretty, uh, uh, I'm excited to see what they come up with, and we're hoping that when they get their program all done, they'll send us a copy of what they do.
So they're coming up with some like creative ideas to improve transportation in North Reading, like basically.
They're, uh, this is a civic, uh, project that they've taken on, and this.
Just these, these three seniors, or?
Yeah, these three, yeah, they're the, uh, well, they're, they're the, uh, leaders of this, I'm not sure how many other people are involved in it. But they, I think those three seniors, this is a civic project that they have, so.
There's different groups. And they, they, they were separated into different groups.
Okay.
Because you're probably gonna have three now coming.
Okay, then, maybe another we can see. But they do, it's not a, but the, the Transportation Committee's done a great job, we can see now, and they, they don't get here enough, the initiation or attention. With the number of rides they provide for seniors and kids who are, would you, you just get a ride. It's cool, yeah.
So, um, yes, Warren, that's awesome, I've been seeing those buses buzz around all over the place, and, um.
We started with one year one now.
And you know what, I always say, Warren, pass, help do that, even with that together. Um, and I got to see, uh, firsthand, like, how you guys operate and a little bit of what goes on over there, and it's pretty cool. They've done a great job with the Transportation, Transportation Committee.
Eighteen volunteer drivers.
It's amazing, that, that committee has done some really cool things for our, um, community. So, Warren, every time I see him, man, I give him kudos to you, because of the effort you put in, but, um, I'm really.
Really the driving force, he's something else.
Yeah, it's awesome, I'm glad that that's working out, but I'm really glad, Dave, to hear too, um, about, uh, your update with the fire station. Because I know that the, the town's been wrestling with the whole fire station thing for a long time, and, um, I actually look at it like you know, we got some really skilled people that are in good positions, um, within the town, that understand all of this stuff. You know, the way that, you know, you have to do the ins and outs of the building, and all the things that are attached to permitting, and all the things that go along with it. So I'm excited, because I did meet with, um, with the chief, and I took a tour of the building, and, um, yeah, it's not great. Yeah, it's not great.
It wouldn't even have showers.
It's, I, and, and you know, when, when it all kind of first came up, like, when you were kind of working on it in the beginning. I, I kind of understood it, now that I've toured the building, I've met with the chief, I've talked to the chief, and I, and I see what you're saying now, like, all of that came to life, um, so I actually am excited for you guys with that one, because that's really a great need in the town here, so.
John, you have any property? Like, that was a poker face, gave me a little tilt of the head. Hey, where's that half run property guy?
Sinai building would be perfect, a free lot, right there, I've already listened to you guys. Have performed, like a finance station across from my house, and, now, what do we call it? Well, this town, I almost got that property years ago. Yeah, yeah, right, right.
That's gonna be the biggest challenge, I think, and we, especially all the people in front of me here that know the town well.
Did the old, uh, state property at the top of the hills, could have played a part upon.
I think the only problem there is, it's a little too like, so I think the MRI study did do a um, they did do a circle, you know, around that one, they, they, it's the NFPA four-minute rule. You know, that's kind of like the measurement tool for, you know, how, the, the response time with fire truck, or some response should be at your door. This four, four minutes or under, and, um, and so again, like I mentioned, like, right now, there's a certain amount that are serviced by um, headquarters, and then, then they're, and you're not. And so just move that station over to Main Street, just doing that, almost gets, you know, a lot more. But I think when you go further down winter, they, you know, they'd have to come back, it's, that's the only problem, you're like, because that property is there, you know, it's like, okay, that's. They had an old state prop, property, wouldn't that be a good spot, I know, I just think, do you, don't you think it's a little too, well, is it south, or? It's, it's, it's south of the, one to the street, Kitty's intersection.
Yeah, weren't, weren't they standing, Dave?
Which, Danielle, which state property are you talking about?
I know.
That could show.
John, which one you just got assaulted? Oh, that's, okay, yeah, I know, I, I spoke with the owner there, yeah.
Yeah, he wants us.
So that's, that's like five acres, um, it's.
No, 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 no.
Is it, you're talking about the crazy, uh, an eighty-four minute.
The Martino?
Oh, there's an old.
Well, I just took the guy's name, I didn't mean that, I'm sorry, I want the public to know, I'm saying the name of the property, I'm not the. That's from the, that's from the peanut gallery. Please clarify that.
They, every one of them had a West Side Fire Station as the number one priority.
Yeah, I know.
And then it would be the number one priority, and then we do a school, then it'd be a number one priority.
Yeah, that's why I think it's kind of due, but it's again, it's up to the.
It's always in that book or something, I read in the back, West Side's Fire Station.
It's always there, Kevin did it.
Yeah, I know.
Twenty years.
It's tough.
They got the ladder for us, right?
Yeah, it's a nice drugs, right, two, two, I think, in order, right? Um, but again, so we'll, sorry to digress, if we keep going, but, uh, that'll, that'll.
My property fall over the exit intersection.
There you go. Are we adjourned?
Thank you, we're adjourned, thank you.